Moment of silence, please. Thank you. I want to welcome our representatives here that came tonight. We very much appreciate you. I want to welcome everybody that came out in the audience as well for your participation tonight. We're going to go right to having that discussion with the representatives right away. If we want to introduce ourselves, we'll actually start with Mr. Hodges on my left.
Kevin Hodges.
John Heikel from Goffstown.
Go ahead. Why don't you introduce yourselves as well, everybody?
Forrest Gornier.
Jenny McKenna.
Sue Tremblay.
Ray Lepore.
Debbie George.
Michael Harris.
Stacy Buckland.
Keith Allard.
Philip Pancoast.
Phil Kendall.
Kent Nolan.
Thomas Hart.
Russell Dane.
Larry Emmerton.
Thank you very much. We'll actually open up and start discussing some of the bills that are in front of you. Obviously, the school board would have opinion on some of these bills because they will affect us. This year, it seems to be less than last year when we were talking. House Bill 231, we are obviously in support of and should ought to pass. That's actually requiring the inclusion of an automatic continuation clause in collective bargaining agreements with public employees to repeal. That's to repeal it. We have strongly felt that the Evergreen Clause actually would have negative consequences on the tax rate of Goffstown with our negotiations with both our support staff and teaching staff unions that we have. Going to certainly let other board members weigh in as well. Anybody have anything else they want to say? House Bill 231, that's the repeal of the Evergreen Clause in the bargaining agreement? Yes, House Bill 231 is to repeal that clause.
And that's the clause that if we didn't have a contract, teachers would automatically get--
Get raises.
Continue the existing contract.
Right. They would continue to move up the stuff.
Didn't know if--
No. They would just get their step increases?
Correct.
Would they get track increases?
They would get track increases if they moved up in--
If they got the degree or whatever, right. But no salary increase?
Well, that your step increases would be a salary increase.
Yeah, but I mean, the 1 percent.
But like the 30% cost of living rates that we built into the clauses, they would not really get that if they didn't get a new contract. Well, currently, right now, the contracts we have, I believe, are grandfathered ones we have right now.
Right. It would only be any new contract.
Any new contract. Currently, they passed the Evergreen Clause last year. This is to actually repeal that clause a bit.
Right. That's what I thought. My comment would be, I think it's a terrific idea to repeal it for the simple reason that if folks are still getting their increases for step and track, what's the incentive to go to the bargaining table and really come down and say, "We have to solve this." If I was getting a raise, I wouldn't care if I had a new contract or not.
Anybody have representatives want to weigh in?
Yes, I do. I recall, I think, two years ago, when we were meeting like this also, that I was-- I sort of startled people by saying, "You know, it's not totally a bad thing," and I would not immediately throw it out entirely, but by the same token, I think it should be an agreed-upon process with some kind of structure about settling the contract dispute or the differences and resolving issues and requiring some kind of either mediation or some kind of active participation on both sides, perhaps. And I still feel that way. I think it should not be a mandatory thing, but I think it should be an optional thing that if the school board and the unions all agreed, that it might be a good thing in the long run, but I would definitely have some kind of time limits involved and a requirement that they participate in the process.
Senator Day, anybody else? Senator DeLuca Steinberg?
Thank you. I apologize for my tardiness, but I teach on Mondays. So I went out of school late.
You're right.
I wish I could say the teacher held me over.
I think there are a couple of concerns.
First of all, the genesis of the legislation was when Governor Benson was in place and stopped negotiations with the state employees. The state employees went to court, and at that time, the step increases were the question, the fact that you didn't have a contract. Could you keep the step increases in place? Would the step increases be granted? The court ruled in favor of the state employees, so the step increases were granted. There are communities that do have the Evergreen Clause, and it's a negotiated item. I agree with Representative Day. Obviously, the terms of your negotiations, I think, they should be the elements that come into play, and hopefully, that's a situation that's going to exist. That's why that attached situation was created. That then evolved into a piece of legislation which went through the legislature. Contracts are problematic from the get-go at this point in time, so I think the better the relationship between the two entities, the better the situation. And I agree with you. I think it's very important that at the local level, the criteria be established and negotiated out. And hopefully, if indeed that's not the case, we can rectify that legislatively.
Anyone else? Is there one you want to talk about right away?
Do you want to tackle HB2 on the retirement?
Oh, that's the next big one. Yes, HB2. That is the bill that lowers the contribution by the state for the retirement system. The proposal is 75-25, local state, while it's currently 65-35. So you're looking to raise the burden to be 75 percent for the school district from a 65 percent. Obviously, we're strongly against that, especially since budgets are already out there. That's a significant amount of money for local budgets to absorb.
Just so the legislators know, that would be, if it was passed at 70 percent for the district's contribution, it's an additional $66,816 that the district would need to find. If it was passed at 75 percent, it's $133,632 that the district would need to find.
Plus our percentage of the SAU budget.
Yeah, plus SAU.
Which includes another 5,000, $10,000.
The House budget does-- I mean, Larry can--
Yeah.
The House members can tell you more about the House budget. I sat in on the explanation of the budget today, but it goes 30 in the first year and 25 in the second.
Yeah. I actually just got a memo, like literally just before I came here, explaining that it's a two-year cutting cost. Although, I guess I would say that these are probably the worst two years to probably cut them.
Well, I agree with that, but that's-- On Wednesday, the House will vote on their budget. Budget will then come to the Senate. It's a very difficult year. I don't know what we'll do in the Senate, but clearly, the 30 percent is a 5 percent decrease. I've looked at it, the Manchester contribution as well as the Goffstown contribution, something that you didn't budget. I mean, you didn't budget for, so it's a problem that we're going to have to deal with. But the document that we're going to get reduces it twice, 30 and 25.
Yeah. I might--
There he goes. There he is.
Just bring you up. We're talking about HB2.
What's that?
Now, that scares me. Larry, go ahead.
Well, I was just going to say, in general, the House Finance Committee and the minority leader of the House Finance Committee just walked in the door, and he can overrule what I might say or disagree with what I say. But the bottom line it amounts to is that the Republicans liked almost all the budget. Obviously, we didn't like everything. Having said that, the chairman of the Finance Committee said, "This is a bad budget, and it's not going to look anywhere near what happens in May or June when it goes out," because they'll have more information. The leading spokesman for the other party said, "This is a horrible budget, but it's the one we've got, and we had to pass something because of crossover and because of the roofs and all that." So that's the scenario we kind of worked through. Bad, worst, and horrible, but that's what we have to do with. So what can we say? If we knew where there was some gold and you had oil out here in vacuum in my old house or something, we'd be all set.
Anybody else want to weigh in, HB2?
Have we talked about all the taxes?
Not yet.
Not yet.
Waited for you for that.
All the new taxes, you mean? All the new taxes? Go ahead and jump right in on that.
House Bill 2 is used by the Democrats to fund their budget. They have some more spending than the governor does for good and sufficient reasons as far as they're concerned, but in addition to relying on hundreds of millions of dollars of one-time money from the federal government, they still needed to raise quite a bit of money, and they have approximately $359 million-- well, sorry-- roughly $200 million of additional taxes that they would impose on us. $75 million from a capital gains income tax, $40 million from an increase in the rooms and meals tax, $57 million from an increase in cigarette tax, the fourth and five years, $16 million from a tax on gambling, $10 million from a tax on estates in excess of $2 million. So they found it necessary to raise additional revenue, and the problem that I have with this is twofold. First, the capital gains taxes and income tax. There are three kinds of incomes that most people have. You have interest and dividends, which you already tax, capital gains, and then your salary or your wages. So it's a three-legged stool. We now have one of those three legs. This would be the second leg. So this looks like an effort to do an end run around the governor's pledge of, "I would oppose an income tax." Veto an income tax. Moreover, raising taxes in general in a recession is just contrary to what all the economists tell us. The idea is to stimulate the economy, and you don't do that by taking money out of it and giving it to government. You stimulate the economy as Washington is doing, although not necessarily by borrowing it, but by injecting more money into the economy. So if I have $25, I'm going to spend that on a variety of things. If the state takes it away from me, the state probably will spend it on something, but very different things, stimulating the economy in very different ways from what would happen if I had it. The total-- the other problem, and this is pardon House Bill 1, is that the Democrats, as you've indicated, have not funded school building aid. That's $83 million, and they have not funded revenue sharing, which is $50 million. Now, revenue sharing goes to the cities and towns. Building aid goes to the schools, but both of them are paid by taxpayers. If you add the $200 million of new taxes, plus the $133 million of additional local property taxes, which the Democrats are foisting on all of the citizens of the state, and you divide that by the 1.3 million households-- human beings in the state, men, women, and children-- and if I punch in the numbers correctly-- rounded up $260 for every man, woman, and child in the state. In other words, for a family of four, the Democrats are going to have us pay an extra $1,000, some to the state and some to the locality. That's bad public policy. I hope that Senator Alessandro and senators are able to correct that, but I'm embarrassed as a member of the House that we have now, or will have, assuming the Democrat budget passes unamended on Wednesday, we now have a formal House position that we don't want to fund these two very important local resources. So from Goffstown's point of view, significant money. I was trying to add up about eight-- well, seven or eight different bond issues that you have outstanding, where the state has made payments towards the principal for years and years, which, if the Senate does not amend the budget, you will not be receiving for the next two years and will cause the school budget to go up because you're going to have to pay those bills, even if the state doesn't reimburse you, and therefore, Goffstown residents will have to cut higher property taxes for their school budget.
If I can also add too, I believe that catastrophic aid has not been funded at an appropriate level either. I believe it wasn't funded to what we needed to get reimbursed this year, and I believe next year, in the budget, it's proposed at the same amount as this year, which would, again, cause the district to get reimbursed at a much lower rate.
That's true. In the past, when the legislature has underfunded catastrophic aid, in many cases, in the following year, there would be a bill to appropriately fund it. That may not happen because of the budget crunch that we're facing. Moreover, the $83 million that I mentioned is not the full cost of providing 100 percent of building aid. The full cost is something like, I think it's $91 or $92 million. There is $3 million in the budget for it, so the correct number would be something like 87 or 88. In other words, even if we restored the $83 million, Goffstown will get 9 and 1/2 cents on the dollar instead of 10 cents. I'm sorry, 99 cents on the dollar instead of 100 cents on the dollar.
Did you want to discuss the HB 143?
Can I?
No, go ahead, Suzanne.
I guess now is a good time for me to bring out my pet peeve, and my pet peeve has to do with you folks in Concord. We sit here every year. We start working on our budgets in September. We, and the Budget Committee, we put hours and hours into it. We bring a budget to our voters in March, and they say, "Okay, it's kind of reasonable. We'll vote for your budget." And then you folks in Concord come along, and you make changes in our budgets. And then our people say, "How come my taxes went up this much?" And I had to answer that question in Budget Committee last month. "Why such a big increase?" I said, "Because not only are we having to spend a little bit more, not much more, believe me, we're very, very tight this coming year, but our revenues are going down, and that has the same impact as spending more." So I guess that's my pet peeve. You guys wait till after we get our budgets passed, and then you come along and say, "We're not going to send you this, and we're not going to send you that, and tighten your belt over here." We have to find that money somewhere, and as has been said, our budget is so tight, God knows what we're going to have to do in order if we-- these cuts, these-- for us, it's a tax because it's money we're not getting, so you're taking it away from us, so it's a tax. You can dress it up and call it a reduction, a cut, or whatever, but for us, the net result is that it's a tax on our people. That's my pet peeve.
You're absolutely right. That is to say, we do that and are aware of it, and we really have a problem in doing that, but we're faced also with pressures. And so-- and I'm not demeaning the Goffstown School Board or any school board. Sometimes, we give in to the pressures that we face and downshift the burden. It's happened before. I wouldn't bet that it wouldn't happen again.
I guess my thing would be, if you did it in a time when we could put it in our budgets rather than have to take something away.
We're set up statutorily to meet in the spring--
I know that.
And I don't think we can move November elections to March and start meeting in the fall, but that would be one way to fix it.
The process-- remember, the process is the state does a biennial budget. We create a budget well in advance. I think it's miraculous that we come as close as we do in terms of our prognostications about what the revenues will be. So we're still doing a biennial budget. When the legislature comes in, you know, the last part of the biennial budget is being done. You have to deal with that. That's FY09, and you have to look at 10, and you have to look at 11. I think we're becoming better educated about forecasting and so forth, but it's a process. When we voted for annual sessions, the idea was we were going to do an annual budget, and that's why we had annual sessions. And that's why I think the people in the state voted for annual sessions, but we haven't. We haven't left a biennial budget. Therein lies the real dilemma. It's the mechanics of putting a biennial budget together that interrupts with-- you have a calendar year fiscal year, we have a June-July fiscal year, the federal government has a September-October fiscal year, so there are overages in all situations. But I agree, it's a difficult situation. Having served on the school board in Manchester for a long time, we had to adjust our year. We went from a calendar year fiscal year to the June-July fiscal year, but still, it's problematic, and we empathize with you. We just-- we do the best that we can. And I think one thing we can say, whether you're a Republican or a Democrat, people do work hard--
Oh.
--you know, to try to put it together. And Neil keeps talking about the Democrats. Well, I mean, the House of Representatives consists of 400 people. There were Democrats and Republicans on the committee. The committee worked something out. That budget will come over to the Senate. The Senate will work on the budget. We'll do some different things to the budget, and we're going to come up with a product that services the people of the state, and that's our challenge, and that's what we'll respond to. And believe me, we come home every night to the-- I don't-- Concord's not that far from Manchester. I come home every night. I live on the West Side. I know exactly what's happening, and we're all talking to our neighbors. We're talking to the people who work in different jobs. We all know how difficult times are, but I appreciate your comments and certainly take them to heart. And when we work on the budget, we do our very, very best, and we'll continue to do that. It's not-- this one's not an easy one. This is the most difficult budget I've ever seen. I'm being very honest with you. I've never seen anything like this, and I've been in elective office since 1972. It's never been like this.
Before I was born.
You--
I just want to add one more quick thing to that. If you think we have the problem, the governor starts his budget back-- or his people started in August or September, and they perform a budget in November, December. They're almost three years before the end of the 2011 budget, so it's almost like going up to Las Vegas and throwing money on the wall and hoping somebody sticks. It really is, because look what happened in the last year.
Phil?
I'm not sure who used the word "downshift," so I won't attribute to anybody, but somebody in this room on that end of the table, thank you, referred to downshifting from the state to the community as an artifact of the way we all do our budgets. We need to understand more about your predictive modeling, because we downshift before we get to you by responding to the Budget Committee and taxpayer needs, which we did this year. The unfortunate consequence of being second in line is going to be that we're going to have to figure out what to do, it sounds like, and it's understandable, given the circumstances. We're going to have to figure out what to do with less and how to spread around less, even if it's only because of changes in the state retirement, if there are other things that change also, because less money flows back because of downshift. The place where that usually-- the easiest place to deal with large changes is with people, and we've worked terribly hard over 10 years to develop a school district which has become very successful at doing for its students what we would like to do. We don't do everything, but we found a way to accomplish lots of things. So we need to figure out a way to have this dialogue before the downshift occurs. So anything that we can do to enhance our predictive modeling based upon yours can only put us that much further ahead, because this is going to be bad news on top of bad news, because we're responsible to two groups. We're responsible for the downshift, and we're responsible to the taxpayers when we put our budgets together. And I guess I probably wouldn't be surprising you when I tell you that it was an interesting fall, winter, and March here, as it was in most communities in the state. So as you deal with these things, understanding that you're going to be rearranging chairs on the deck, I would urge you to use as much discretion as you can in rearranging those so that we have the opportunity to make adjustments in real time.
Go ahead. Mr. Pratt, go ahead.
I appreciate that, and we all do, and the problem is the one that you addressed before. There's a timing issue. At a time when you need the information to make your budget decisions, we don't have it to give you.
This is what I told-- this is what we all told our community in September.
And it's worse when we face a troubling budget such as this one, because there are likely to be larger shifts one way or the other. In a traditional budget year, where the question is, "How much more will we spend? A lot or a little?" As opposed to, "Will we reduce and cut?" The impact is really much smaller, and you can absorb it, and it's not that big a hit on taxpayers. This year, it could be. Let me offer a couple of other points that may be helpful. I believe that the Senate will find some way to restore both building aid and revenue sharing. But there's something else in this budget that really helps, especially school districts. We have changed the contribution rate for employees toward their pension plan. Right now, Group 1 contributes 5 percent, and Group 2 contributes 9.3 percent of their salaries. In the House version of the budget, we've increased that to 7 percent and 11 percent and directed the retirement system to recalculate employer contributions. The state is employer, and municipalities and school districts as employers. Based on the use of that money and the now higher value of the fund corpus, because the stock market has gone up recently compared to what it was a number of months ago when the official calculation was made, the net effect of that will be for cities and towns and school districts to see their share of pension contributions from this alone drop by $76 million. Okay? The state will find its share of pension contributions from all funds, not just the general fund, is about $24 million. Now, those numbers are subject to final action or determination by the actuaries in the retirement system. So one of the things that we've done, which is, I won't call it an upshift, but it's the opposite of a downshift, we have provided a reduced expenditure for school districts and for communities for pension costs, real dollars. Most of it is for school districts because most of the employees and communities that are participating in the pension system are teachers. There are some policemen and some firemen, but this does not include municipal employees like the highway workers, because they don't participate-- or, excuse me, our government. The state doesn't back them up, doesn't contribute on their behalf. Now, to counter this, another thing we've done hurts you. We have decreased the amount of money that the state will reimburse you for your pension contributions from 35 percent, which is current, to 30 percent in 2010, and 25 percent in 2011. That hurts you to the tune of $27 million. 76 coming in, 27 going out. Now, that's for school districts and communities, and I don't know the breakdown.
Can I ask you a quick question?
Sure.
Just because I want to understand exactly what you're saying. The 76 coming in, is that money that is reduced from what we are currently spending or what we would spend in the future?
This is reduced from what your pension contributions would otherwise be in 2010. Whatever they are, and I don't know what numbers you've used, they will be reduced aggregate for the state-- and I can't tell you what Goffstown is in particular-- by $76 million. Now, that assumes the Senate continues this. There's a great deal of pressure on all of us, Republicans and Democrats, House members and soon senators. Senator Alessandro will not believe the number of emails he's about to receive-- --from-- Senator DeLisandro will not believe the number of emails he's about to receive from employees who really objected us for a whole variety of reasons.
And the $76 million is an aggregate figure?
Yes.
Or all of the?
For the state.
The entire state.
Okay. So the only way to really have an understanding of what that means would be to fix a percentage and then look at it and examine it in terms of what the current distribution is and how it affects that distribution.
If we know the total amount that cities and towns and school districts now contribute for pensions or expect to contribute for pensions in 2010, 76 million on top, that number on the bottom, and that's your percentage, which you could then apply to your --
In theory, your --
Yeah.
But the number, until we understand what that is, we can't really do that comparison.
Right. But the point is, it's a net of pretty close to $50 million. We've taken away on the one hand by reducing our match from 35 to 30 to 25. So you've lost there roughly $27 million. On the other hand, you've gained because we've provided a lower pension contribution rate for the basic pension itself.
Okay.
So let's assume a person has a pension cost of $100. The state used to pay 35, now we're only going to pay 30, and the community would have to make up the other $65. But now that $65 is going to be something less. We don't know the exact amount. Maybe it's 60, maybe it's 55. So you get hurt on one end, sorry, it'll be more than that, and you make it up on the other. Net, it's a gain for the communities. Again, that assumes it stays. Both of these are controversial for obvious reason. Employees don't like them. I don't know what the Senate will do. But we tried to be fair. One of the problems we had is that, at least for state workers, they got a 5.5% increase January 1st. The governor asked for a give back to help balance the budget. The union said no. State workers have, and we can debate this till the sun sets, state workers have a very, very generous benefit package, both for active state workers and retirees, especially when it comes to health care. And we've made some changes in retiree health care. This doesn't affect you folks, this only affects state employees. And so there's a lot of pushback on that. And again, Senator, more emails.
I get them all the time.
Oh, ready?
I get 300 a day. Plus, I get letters.
Yes, we get the letters too. And some of them are quite moving. So this is, it's not a horrible budget, it's a very difficult budget. It's very difficult to say no to somebody. It's very difficult to reduce somebody's benefit, especially when they're not particularly well off. And we've tried to spread the pain, as it were. And when I say "we," I mean Republicans and Democrats because 99% of that budget is identical in both the minority and the majority's version.
At the end of the day, anybody's, this is my opinion, anybody's party affiliation is irrelevant. It's a difficult job. Parsing out where those dollars are going is not easy. The thing that I would like to have traction on, because we find ourselves in basically the same position that you do when we're proposing and selling a budget and we're presenting it to the taxpayers here in town. It's our best guess and information comes in, and new information that we couldn't have anticipated comes in, that affects that process. And so in real time, it occurs. So the goal here is for us to maybe improve the dialogue so that when we're, when the, let's see, the horses or the cattle go off the cliff, that we can at least keep some of them back to feed us for the rest of the year.
But if you've been listening to what we've been saying, you know now that what I've told you describes Phase Two of a four-phase process, and until June 30th of this year, nobody, nobody knows what will happen. So if we give you information as the stages go on, it can't be relied on.
It might just make you more crazy, actually.
I don't think we could be any crazier.
I'm actually, because we're running a little short on time, I want to jump into the stimulus money, and I'm going to actually let Superintendent Buckley talk briefly on that.
And I think I'm probably looking for some clarification, if anybody knows. I'm looking for the intersection between adequacy dollars and stimulus money. My understanding is that the Adequacy Commission has costed outward and education is working on accountability factors and funding is the next phase. I believe Goffstown is looking to get about, a little more than $400,000 in additional adequacy dollars based on the new formula. My understanding is the governor has put in the budget that he's proposing to use stimulus money to make up that gap. I'm also hearing on the flip side that the stimulus money, the intent was not to fill that gap for a state's obligation to fund education, but to help communities fill the void of money that was cut through budgets to continue to keep staff, continue to keep educational programs going. I don't know if anybody has any clarification on that.
I think the governor, the governor used the stimulus money to pay the increase that was created by the legislation that was passed. So it's $121 million. You get a $121 million increase so that the adequacy money that you were expecting based on the formula is the adequacy money that you will get. So that's funded at the 100% level. Now internally, you'll get stimulus money for Title I and IDEA that will come directly, that'll come directly to you. In many communities, you'll be receiving more education money, there'll be a net gain in education money. And I believe that the governor had discretion as to how this stimulus money could be used, and it's an appropriate use of the money.
Yeah, and I bring this up just, I don't know, well, in education, this weekend, Education Week, there's a huge, a huge article about two states that actually did that same exact thing, and the federal government is saying that's not an appropriate use of stimulus money. So I just, I was looking for clarification on that, whether --
We haven't, we haven't heard that.
We have not heard that.
At all?
What, in the majority budget, education is fully funded at the formula level. And from your point of view, it doesn't matter whether it's borrowed money, money that we printed, it's long some passes, but --
More.
But that is coming to you. The governor, under the stimulus package, we have two kinds of pots. Stimulus money, which is the Medicaid kind of money, and what we call stabilization money, which is the education money. We have about $200 million, $200 million point seven dollars of stabilization money. Some of that is relatively unrestricted as to what you can use it for. But the bulk of it, like 81%, can only be used to supplement and not supplant what was slated to be expended, I think, on October 1st, 2008. We had a formula in place then, and as Senator DeLisandro has said, that formula requires us to spend another $100, I don't know, $21 million. Since that is a greater amount than was being spent on October 1st, 2008, we can take federal stimulus money, stabilization money, and use it to pay that extra $121 million. I think the governor put in $117, designed to give rooms and meals revenue sharing back to the cities and towns through a switch. He took the federal money and used it for education, freeing up $117 million of general funds, which he then turned around and used to fund the rooms and meals revenue sharing, which doesn't affect the school districts, but certainly affects cities and towns. The remaining money, 70-plus million dollars, is already spent in the House budget, not specifically allocated to A or B or C, although I believe perhaps $8 million is allocated to the university system, $3 million, $3.5 million or something like that to community colleges, and I think $3 million for kindergarten aid. But the bulk of it, like in the Democrats' budget, it's $72 million, is sitting there saying unallocated stabilization money, but it's used to balance the budget. We assume that at some point we can take it out of that pot and say, like the governor did with respect to the adequacy money, we're going to use so much for this, so much for that, and so much for the other thing in order to balance the budget. As far as we know, there is no other money available to the state to use to balance the budget. It may be that we get some more stimulus money for Medicare, Medicaid, but that would not affect the school board.
So I guess the clarification I was looking, so the governor at this point considers the allocation that Goffstown would get in adequacy money as the additional dollars as that supplementing, not supplanting.
Now, the governor, we're playing the kinds of, we're playing by the rules the feds have set. You're going to get your $958 million in year one and $959 million in year two. You're getting that regardless of the source of funding. All we're saying, all the governor's saying, instead of paying the bill with the general fund dollars, I'm going to pay part of the bill with general fund dollars and the other part with stabilization dollars.
If you'd like clarification on this too, you can go to staterecovery.org, and this will be very specific as to where this money, I think it will answer a lot of those questions that a lot of you have, where the stimulus money is going to be.
The one thing that might benefit school districts is if the other 70 million cannot be spent on anything except education. And then, who knows what will happen? And that's one of the things that the Senate may discover as the budget goes forward and the federal government issues more rules clarifying the limitations with respect to this money. Most of us are really going in the blind at this point because the rules are so general that we really don't know. One of the advantages for the Senate is that being second in line, there's more information available, more accurate revenue numbers, more accurate stabilization numbers. One thing I would caution you is, remember, this is one-time money. If you get a pot of money from the federal government for whatever purpose it is, as far as we know, it ends at the end of 2011. So if you use that money to undertake large ongoing programs, either you're going to have to cut them back in 2012, or you're going to have to pass on the cost to the taxpayer.
So do you anticipate that in 2011, when the stimulus money is gone, that the governor will fully fund adequacy aid since we're using stimulus to supplement it?
Yes, yes, which creates a $117 million hold for the state when we start doing the 2012-2013 budget, right there.
Right off the bat.
Just to follow up what Neil had to say, one thing is that the Commission Health Human Services, which is half, almost half the budget, he had never seen so many strings and ropes on the money that's coming from Washington. So that's something you have to read the fine print, he says, and they're reading it over there, and they've got about 40 lawyers over there that can look at that stuff. Three things that we did on the healthcare finance committee, one was to try to spend $260 million, which was a bulk of the stimulus money that came to the state, more than the highway, more than education. We put that into Medicaid, TANF and WIC, which indirectly helps the schools because you have families that need that. Secondly, we, the governor did not fund the development of disabled waitlist. We've all heard of that over the years for the people in wheelchairs and all, they're really in tough shape. We funded that for one year only, for $8 million plus $8 million federal funds, $16 million to keep that going. If we didn't, at the next biennium, not this one, there'd be over 1,000 people on that waitlist. So we felt one year at least, we're trying to find some money. Lastly, as I told Stacy, the Tobe School, maybe you folks are indirectly working with that, the governor closed the Tobe School in Assent. We funded it for one more year. The reason we did that is we were going to try to merge the Philbrook Center, you send children to, with the Tobe School, and we're going to study that a while. In the meantime, keep both of them open and see if we can merge them to get some type of money. Maybe the Senate will have some better ideas than we did. It was a brand-new school we put the Tobe School people into. We spent a lot of money rehabbing this school. We didn't want to just close it and not utilize it, so we're going to get a one-year reprieve on it to hope indirectly it's going to help school districts, particularly like ours.
All right. Well, we're getting near the end of time, and we had a lot of for this. Want to thank you very much for coming in. If there's any last minute comments from any of the representatives, we'll let you have a chance.
Good luck. Just reminding everyone that we're elected officials, and you can encourage, you can blame us come next year if you're getting a lot of heat.
We'll just blame Neil.
Okay.
I believe the school board also consists of elected officials.
That's true. That's why you can push it. Downshift votes to us.
Don't downshift. I think my word of advice is this, the House will vote on a budget on Wednesday. You look at the corpus of what's voted upon, I think Neil's going to offer 50 amendments, watch his amendments, because I'm sure that they will be considered, and then the product will come to the Senate. The Senate is going to get a briefing on Friday at 10 o'clock in the morning on the budget passed by the House. The Senate will then get a briefing by the Legislative Budget Office on Monday on the budget and all of the sections of the budget. The Senate will then hold public hearings on the 14th, 15th, and 16th. The 14th in Laconia, the 15th in Concord, and the 16th in Manchester will take public comment on the budget. Senate will address its revenue estimates on the 21st. Senate Ways and Means will then decide what the revenue estimates are for the budget as we move forward. We'll begin discussions on the budget on that next Monday. We'll be calling in agencies in, and we will begin reviewing the budget. We have three options. We can look at the governor's budget, we can look at the budget that's passed by the House, or we can negate both and start from scratch.
Good luck.
And we have an opportunity, we have an opportunity to do that. So we'll do the best that we can. That's the lineup of events. We appreciate public input. We'll televise the hearing in Manchester, and I'll get that disc, as I've done in the past, and get it to the Goffstown Educational Channel so that people can watch it. The hearings are going to be from 5:00 to 7:00, and we'll take comments on the two existing budgets, the governor's budget and the budget that's passed by the House.
Where is it going to be in Manchester?
In Manchester, it will be in the Aldermanic Chamber. In Concord, it will be in the House Chamber. In Laconia, it will be at the middle school. So thanks very much for allowing us to be here this evening.
Appreciate it. Appreciate your work.
Thanks, Senator.
Thank you.
See you, Ron.
See you, Ken. It's always a pleasure. Thanks for coming. So well, this is the last one. It was a pleasure. Thanks. It's a pleasure. Thanks. I think it's a good idea. It's going to get reduced by, yeah.
Yeah.
That's not all, Matt. That's not all, it's close, so he'll take my word. And he'll start seeing himself out of the hole. You know, you can remember him coming to work one day in some, a sewer, and there were two women, some especially, it was a quarter of an inch. Okay. It was, it was. That's where we, that's where we, that's where we. Yeah.
Yeah. That's right.
You know, I've been a nail to the mallet. Well, I think we're doing a steady. We're going to continue slightly out of order, and we're going to ask the leadership class from Goffstown High School, they're coming here to discuss their homeless project. If you guys want to come on up front?
And if I can let the board know, this was actually a project that came forward to Mr. McBride and then to myself. We had some concerns and some questions, and the leadership class addressed them all. So Frank and I support this project, and we didn't want to talk to you guys about what to do for approval overnight, actually, during the school. Go for it, guys.
All right. So why don't you introduce yourselves real quick, okay?
I'm Alan Finn.
I'm Brooke Toddle.
I'm Jennifer Treck.
Thank you.
All right. So for our leadership class, we need to do some sort of service project thing, so we decided that in order to raise awareness and funds for homelessness in the state of New Hampshire, we were going to do this Home for Tonight project in which we will sleep in --
Excuse me, can I interrupt for a brief -- gentlemen, it's hard to hear them. Thanks very much. Go ahead.
All right. So basically, what we're going to do is, what we'd like to do is, sleep in cardboard boxes for one night somewhere --
state of New Hampshire, we were going to do this Home For Tonight project, in which we will sleep in.
Excuse me, can I interrupt for a minute? Gentlemen, it's hard to hear them, thanks very much. Go ahead.
All right, so basically what we're going to do is, what we'd like to do is sleep in cardboard boxes for one night somewhere on school grounds, and everybody that participates will be sponsored by family members and neighbors, and all of the funds will be donated to New Horizons Home and Children's Hospital.
How many people do you anticipate participating?
If it's just our class, then it'll be 16 people, with Mrs. Nichols and Student Resource Officer Mullen as chaperones.
When's it going to take place?
May 29th, or it's a Friday.
So, so plenty of time to drag other people into the mix outside of class?
If that will be acceptable for you.
We talked about, one of Mr. McBride's, and our concern, and they addressed them, was where they were actually going to be doing this. I think the original proposal was to do it like out back, or they're actually going to do it in the interior.
Hopefully, yeah, the courtyard.
At the courtyard. We had concerns, being 2:00 in the morning, kids needing to use the bathroom, coming in an empty building, and so we talked about doing it.
The courtyard, down by the locker rooms?
Yeah, the interior courtyard, so that at least it was a secured place. Our concern was putting high school kids out in the middle of the fields if that was where they chose to do it, with just not knowing who could show up, not knowing who could be in an unlocked building, we had concerns, and they did do a nice job in addressing those and trying to, they got the resource officer to agree to stay over as well.
And we talked to the maintenance personnel at the school, and they said it would be okay for us to have a door unlocked, and they could turn on lights for us to use the bathroom, and everything else could stay locked, and all the alarms should stay on.
Do you want to share that? Or let them finish?
Our, basically, our rules for the event, each student is requested to raise at least $50 for the event. Food will be provided, and unnecessary items should be left at home. When they arrive at the event, they'll be giving, they'll be given a wristband, which would be worn throughout the entire event, and only students wearing a wristband are allowed to stay. Students are also asked to bring a gently-used clean blanket to the event as a donation, and, yeah. So we have like a general outline of like the project, and one of the organizational procedures is the sponsors, and we have, we're like asking each student to try to raise $50, but if they don't, we like understand, we can still accept them to like participate. And we created like a sponsor sheet, and we have the students, they can go around to like families and friends to try to collect the money, and we are prohibiting door-to-door solicitation because we understand it's not safe. We also made medical forms where it would, the parents would give permission to either Miss Nichols or the Student Resource Officer to give medication, and we also have included the emergency contact information, in case something happens, we would contact their parents and they would be notified, and they might need to like pick their students up.
Do the school governors have any questions for them?
Sounds very well thought out. Are you in a position to send around your sponsor sheet to the school board?
Actually, I mean, if you want, you can actually have it, if you want to send one for the next meeting as well.
Okay.
Yeah. Is there one that you can submit to have available for us, to be sent over to us for the next meeting? I would assume you're looking for donations of both money and other articles possibly, or just money?
Well, we're also asking for, if kids want, they could bring in like a blanket that we also donate to New Horizons. And then these are just the handouts of the examples of our student waiver and the medical forms, and it includes a sponsor sheet.
Does anybody else have any other questions for them? All right, having none, I'll adjutate a motion. Motion by Phil up to.
To allow them to proceed with the project as designed, and based upon the fact that they've addressed the administration's concerns over the issues that the administration had.
Can you second that? Any other questions, comments, discussion? All in favor of the motion? And that passes unanimously, thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Don't forget for next meeting, make sure you send over a sheet.
There's one in.
Oh, there's one in the back?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, never mind. And I would assume we can just send those right back to Mrs. Nichols, who we sent it to? Okay.
Thank you.
We'll try to collect that, someone around and collect that for next school board meeting. We're going to get back into order, and we're actually going to go for an approval of minutes of 31609. Have a motion to approve those minutes?
Ooh.
By Phil, seconded by Ginny. Any amendments or corrections? I haven't seen any other, all right, not seeing.
I just had one on, under superintendent evaluation. Keith Allard asked that board members turn to superintendent evaluations as it is scheduled to be done, as opposed to today, there was only one.
Oh, yeah, it is scheduled to be done, okay.
As opposed to today, so it was only one evaluation.
It was a combination of many independent evaluations that turned into one. And a copy that is actually available, if you guys need to see it, every school board chair has to be provided a copy of that, and is available if the board is requested. All right, all in favor of approving minutes 31609, and that passes unanimously as well. I'm going to start the correspondence folder around, it has the super, it has the teachers' and nursing substitution reports in it, I'll start it this way this week instead. Combinations, good news? Ginny?
Actually, to add to the communications folder, I received a letter from a mom who was concerned about co-curricular fees. And her student not being able to participate in an activity because of those fees, so I will bring it to the next meeting so that we can all peruse it, but I think it's something we need to think about.
Yeah, I mean, I would hope that it would come back with a hardship clause in there as well when you guys meet. I know we talked about putting a max per family, to try not to make it a significant burden on any family, but obviously, I think a hardship clause may need to be put in there or considered.
You're assuming we're going to recommend.
Well, that's correct, it comes back to their recommendation, that's correct.
Suzanne.
I did make an assumption. Thank you for correcting me on that. Combinations, good news? First off, Travis Garrett, last Friday, his wife had their baby, their first baby, he's the assistant principal over at Mountain View, she had a girl and they named her Viola. Are they correct?
Congratulations.
Yeah, we did, by the way, this is a card that's going on our behalf, he took his mailbox tomorrow morning.
Some, just some things going on at the high school, the extended school day, it has started, started April 1st, and it's going to go until May 18th, and that has gone working without much problems, issues, or too much, too much legitimate complaints from the students. We have our Penny Slam, which is one of our fundraisers going on at the high school, it's pretty popular, and that's raising money for NHS, I believe, and they, that goes until Wednesday, and that's just been going on. And we also have our GSA, our Gay Straight Alliance, our high school has a Day of Silence this April 16th, that's coming up, as well as, next school board meeting, I'll be accompanied with our new student school board elect, and he'll be, he or she will be accompanied with me for the next meeting.
Thanks. Thank you very much. Any other combinations, good news? All right, we'll jump right to public comment, is there any public comment? Seeing none, we're going to jump right to the standing committee reports. Admin and Finance?
Yes.
Laurie?
So first up is the manifest, typical stuff in there, payroll, fuel, special ed, nothing overly done, but I do move to recommend it in the amount of $1,509,93.55.
Thank you. Any questions, discussions? All in favor of the motion? That is unanimous, thank you.
And we did have another, in reference to Senate Bill 38, which is about having the tallies put on the warrant articles of the votes. It doesn't have to be a warrant article to allow, it just needs to be a vote by the board, so I would move to recommend adding the tallies on the warrant articles.
Do I have a second to that, next? Second by Ginny. I'll make a comment that this year would have helped our number, would have helped us, you know, if we could have been able to do it.
Could you just?
Sure. Senate Bill 38, Senate Bill 38 added in language that allowed, since we couldn't have recommended by the school board, that this new bill allowed you to have the tally of the actual vote by the board added to the warrant, so that you could do it both for the school board and for the budget committee, so you, like they had on the town side.
On the town side, right.
So pretty much this vote would allow us to add those numbers to ours for next time.
The reason why the town was going to do it is because they voted on the town ballot the year before to allow it, we did not.
And then the Senate Bill changed the law, that didn't require you to have it on a warrant article.
This is what we were speaking about earlier, right? The clarification on why we didn't have the recommended or not recommended on this, okay.
Can I ask you questions?
Sure.
Given that this is the current state of the law.
Now, yes.
Is, is this a policy issue? Because, Laurie, what's the motion that's before us?
To.
We've put the vote.
To approve the vote.
End of the article, on the warrant.
Yes, because the governing body may do so in its own initiative to require such tallies to be printed in the town warrant next to the effective warrant article.
We used to always put recommend or not recommend, then we had to stop doing it because of the law.
Again, the only question I'm asking, and it's not a for or against question, it simply is for clarification, that, that based upon the motion that is before us, if we vote in the affirmative, it would seem that until such time as there was another vote, that would then become our policy.
Yes.
And therefore, is this, is this something that needs to be crafted as a policy and then come before the board? Or is this simply adequate to do it?
Well, I think our policy had been to put the recommend or not recommend, and we had to stop doing that.
I'm not arguing, I'm just asking a question.
It would be a policy, maybe, in what we've been doing.
It's a practice.
A practice, okay, yeah, probably a practice.
Practice runs the policy. Right. And I guess the question is, do we want to make it a formal policy or just make it a motion practice?
Or do we simply want to take this as notification that this is the current state of the law?
You have, we have to approve putting it on there, we think.
Right.
The law has to say, yes, this is what we want to do.
And we would have the opportunity to do that each and every year.
Yep, or you could just say.
Or you could say moving forward.
Until you rescind that decision.
Which is what, which is what the current motion is. Moving forward, it would be our policy to do X.
Right.
Practice.
And again, that's all I was, I was simply pointing out something and not necessarily advocating for one thing or the other.
I guess I would recommend that we amend the motion to use the word "practice" so that we don't have to put through the policy process.
Okay.
We won't do it.
I'm on.
In a second, sure, okay. All right, any other discussion? All in favor of the motion? And that passes unanimously as well, thank you. Anything else?
Ray, was there anything else that was actually applicable at this point?
Just to remind the board that the administration is preparing the current CIP matrix for presentation to the CIP committee in June. We hope to have it in front of you at your next meeting, and give you about four weeks to arrive at your final position. We would be looking for you to adopt at your second May meeting, and then direct administration to present to the, to the town committee. And we would be doing that around the 18th of June, I believe is our scheduled date.
Now, there's no, there's no major changes in our CIP from the matrix from this year?
There are, there is one thing, for example, the windows over at Mountain View Middle School, we had to move forward with that. The other thing, if you will, is the tractor at Mountain View, which was deferred so that we could actually trade for the windows.
I don't think we made any. Roofing or anything on any of the buildings, things like that?
No, I don't think there's any.
No, there are, there are no other major projects that have been identified. If they will be though, they'll certainly be presented to you at the, at your next meeting.
You may see one from the high school, I know Jerry's been working with, on a revamping of the auditorium, that may come out, I don't know where they are on looking at that, putting in new chairs and some refurbishment of it, but I don't know if they'll have that ready for this. But it was in the one.
The other, there were two other things, if I can, Laurie. We are going to be entering the second year with the driver's education contract with Mr. Ross's driving school, that'll be coming up. This is going to be the second of the two-year contract that was executed with him this time last year. And the last issue is basically looking for the board's concurrence to solicit an additional one-year contract with Kids Block for the after-school program at Bartlett.
Does that require a motion?
Just to, your concurrence is fine, we don't have to.
Yeah, I don't think we have any, you didn't have any issues at all this year, do you think?
No, no. The principal is recommending that we keep it at a one-year term, and we will go forward and solicit a proposal from them.
Okay.
Let's ask a question about the driver's ed, how's it, how's it going this year?
From all reports, it's going very well.
These classes are full.
The classes are full, there were a couple of issues that we had included with the contract, such as scholarships, number of students in the cars, and there have been no issues.
My brother is currently in the class, and I know he's having as good of a time as I did when I took the class.
Wasn't there something about having extra classes in the contract, or opening up for additional classes, or am I forgetting, am I mixing things up?
There was talk of a summer program.
That's what it was.
And, and that was optional, depending upon demand.
Yeah. I believe they did have one, I think they did run a summer, yeah.
This past year.
This past summer, they did run one.
Are you going to run one this year as well, you know?
If the demand is there.
Oh, if you haven't yet.
I don't know yet if he's, he got sufficient enrollment.
Okay, thank you.
Well, classes are staying full, so, excellent, okay. HR, that'll be determined, planning and communication will be determined. C and E, you had a meeting on, no, it's Monday, so it's next Monday at 6:30 at SAU. Excellent. Bartlett Building Committee, next meeting will be 4:14 at 3:30 at Bartlett Elementary. I don't believe there's any other updates available right now, is there? Until we go into that meeting, or?
Just as a quick update, we're meeting tomorrow morning with Montipagen Stone. There seems to be a smell coming through the system that we can't identify, it's a random smell, it doesn't happen all the time. None of us have smelled it yet. Every time it smells, we tell them to call us, and that's how we get there, the smell is gone, so, it's been, it's been like the rampant smell, so we are actually meeting with Jim from Montipagen Stone tomorrow, and the installers to try to get an idea what this might be. From what I hear, is, you walk in the, in the gymnasium, the cafeteria, and it's a significant smell, it's a burning smell. But yet, we can't figure out where, it could be, we think it's coming from outside, but we haven't been able to identify that, so.
It's burning.
Yeah, so just so you know, because you may hear, it's, the word is getting around about the smell, so you may hear something, in case you know, we are trying to figure out what it is.
The ventilation's too good?
Yeah.
Okay, excellent. SAU Board Meeting, 4:15, which is next Wednesday, 7:00 in the Boston Central School Library. Is everybody able to attend?
Yep.
Yep, okay, wonderful. So we do need to have a quorum, it is appointing the new officers on that, and we're going to let Stacy go to the superintendent's board, and I'm going to pass out something for you guys to read as well. She works on that?
Um, just a reminder to those on the co-curricular P Committee, the meeting's on Wednesday, I do have a packet of information that I'll have available for you folks at that meeting, just for data and information. I won't be there, we have new Boston School Board meeting, but Brian will be representing the SAU, so he'll, I'll go through all the information with him as well. If anybody's interested on Tuesday, I think I forwarded an email on, they're having a showing of Including Samuel, which is a great video if you're enjoying special education, you enjoy that, at 4:00 is a community showing for teachers, at 1:30, we're doing the showing for the students. Dan Habib, who created the video about his son, will actually be here, it's also being promoted by University of New Hampshire, Institute on Disabilities, who is where we got the grant from, so it's a great opportunity for us to showcase what we do here at Goffstown and get some more information out to our community about.
The ventilation's too good.
Yeah.
Okay, excellent. SAU Board Meeting, four-fifteen, which is next Wednesday, seven o'clock, New Boston Central School Library. Is everybody able to attend?
Yep.
Yep, okay, wonderful. So, we do need to have a quorum, it is appointing the new officers on that, and we're going to let Stacy go to the superintendent's board, and I'm going to pass out something for you guys to read while.
She works on that?
Just a reminder to those on the co-curricular P Committee, the meeting's on Wednesday. I do have a packet of information that I'll have available for you folks at that meeting, just for data and information. I won't be there, we have New Boston School Board meeting, but Brian will be representing the SAU, so I'll go through all the information with him as well. If anybody's interested on Tuesday, I think I forwarded an email on, they're having a showing of Including Samuel, which is a great video if you enjoy special education, you enjoy that, at four o'clock is a community showing for teachers, at one-thirty, we're doing the showing for the students. Dan Habib, who created the video about his son, will actually be here. It's also being promoted by University of New Hampshire, Institute on Disabilities, who is where we got the grant from, so it's a great opportunity for us to showcase what we do here at Gostown and get some more information out to our community about special education and inclusion of students in our schools. For those of you, and you could look at the Health Insurance Committee, that was the contract committee, through the contract, if you remember, we talked about that at a couple of meetings ago. I believe the union has representatives who are willing to sit on that committee, I can't remember off the top of my head, who volunteered. I have your names written down somewhere.
I did find that.
I will email you tomorrow, let me go back and look, but Lila Levine will be the contact person for that. So, what I will do tomorrow is email the committee people who did that, and you can touch base with Lila to schedule that first meeting in. You'll probably have to amend it, I believe the union, the GEA contract talks about having the committee done by June thirtieth, and I'm not sure if you'll get there, so, but I think both parties likely agree that we're starting later than normal, so that's just an FYI.
Yeah, and the bill really wants to work on that before, get some blocking established before the next contract.
Before the next contract, correct. We had a, again, just more information, we had a lockdown this afternoon at Mountain View Middle School, in case anybody hears, I did forward information to New Boston and Dunbar and School Boards in case they have heard this as well. We had a situation where we, a teacher left the building, tried to come back in, the door was locked, didn't have his keys, the hallways were changing, classes, two students were standing outside of the classroom, two teachers were inside, they, the two boys said, I'm assuming jokingly, "Don't let him in," saw that it was, "Don't let him in, he may have a gun." The two teachers in the classroom heard that, didn't know what the context was, walked outside, there were a bunch of kids, couldn't identify who said it, kids all went into the classes, they called Jim and said, "We just heard this," not knowing the context, so we did a lockdown, this department came over, we found out what actually happened. But it was about an hour that the building was locked down while we were trying to figure out who had, what, who had said that, but, so you may get calls, we did send out information with all the students about the incident because they were talking. There were a lot of people, parents called, a lot of parents showed up. Clearly, one of the things we're looking at figuring out how to address is the use of cellphones and texting in these situations, because it isn't good, we start to have parents show up at the building if it was an emergency.
It'd be annoying.
Yeah, so we did, a police officer was able to get to the bottom of the hill and stop parents from coming up, but it is something that we'll need to, we'll need to address and figure out how to get kids from texting. They need to be paying attention and focused on what's going on versus that, so just in case you hear anything. The last information, AYP, Adequate Yearly Progress, was announced, went public today at three o'clock. We actually received the results on Friday, and Phil, I apologize for not sending it, this is how big the packet is. I couldn't figure out how to scan it all in, get it to you.
Oh, no.
I thought you had Denise.
Yeah, it was Friday night, I wasn't going to call her at home. The Gostown School District will become, will be, now, we're looking at appeals and what we might have out of it, but as of this moment, we will now be a district in need of improvement for the subcategory of educational disability for math. That's based on the combination of Gostown High School, which is considered a high school, and elementary, middle school is combined together, and Gostown High School has been a school in need of improvement for the educational disability in math, and Mountain View Middle School has been a school in need of improvement for educational disability subcategory in math. The high school's on year four, the middle school's on year two, so because now we've gotten to year two, it creates the district in need of improvement. If you recall, we were a district in need of improvement last year based on participation rate, we appealed it to the State Board of Education and won that appeal. This time, it was actually on performance. Bartlett Elementary School is a new school in need of improvement, they were not, they will be now for the categories of educational disability in reading and math, and Maple Ave will be now a school in need of improvement for the same thing, educational disability in reading and math. So, it's clearly the subcategory of educational disability, which as I told Stephen Beal today when I spoke with him, that's not something we don't expect. These are students who in order to qualify have to be below grade level. To put it in perspective, there are seventy-two new schools in need of improvement this year, that brings a total of two-hundred-and-thirty-eight schools in the state that are schools in need of improvement. There are twenty-four new districts in need of improvement, which brings the total counts of fifty-four districts in the state that are in need of improvement, so.
How many districts do we have altogether in the state?
I don't know.
Is it around a hundred?
There's about, there's about eighty-something SAUs, and so there's several SAUs that have multiple districts in it.
There's like a hundred and thirty. There's like a hundred and eight when it comes to mine.
Just out of curiosity, when you look at, let's just talk about the increases, the changes in number of districts and the changes in the number of schools. If you look at that segment change, are there, do you know, or have they published whether or not there are any trends in what has generated those changes? Do they all, are they all in similar subcategories?
They haven't released that, but my guess is, and I will look at it, I just printed all this out today, so Mary Claire and I will be meeting and looking at all the data. What this will prompt us to do is Bartlett and Maple Ave will be needing to write a school in need of improvement plan. As an SAU, the district will need to write a district in need of improvement plan, and so we'll be looking at all of that data. My gut reaction would be that, yes, it's the educational disability category that would be the most significant where school districts are falling down. It will be interesting as the new, the new president and the reauthorization of No Child Left Behind to identify where, where we might go. As you know, two thousand and fourteen, we're supposed to be one-hundred percent on grade level, all students.
An impossible task.
Yeah, so, I, not to say that we don't have any areas to improve in, we absolutely will, things that we've worked on this year, response intervention model, some of those things will help substantially for some of these, these kids. My goal now is not to get us in further and continue to watch those other subcategories and make sure that we continue to make sure we meet the standard and meet the needs of all of those students, so that's where we fall. So, I did talk to Stephen Beal, so likely there'll be an article in tomorrow's union leader, so.
Yeah, he said he was writing an article regarding several school districts.
Yep.
Fifty-four.
I don't think it'll be that broad. All right, thank you, Stacy. While you were talking, I was, I handed out a printed copy this year, I don't think I did that last year, and I, because for some reason I remember the print confusion, having to read it several times, gave a printed copy of the suggested appointments to the committees, and was looking for feedback, if anybody had any issues on where they were. Oh, you make copies as well. She's so good like that, but yes, I made some as well, I forgot to ask Denise to make sure she did. Was looking to, Jeff Tate said he was willing to stay on for A and F, Philip said he'd stay on for C and E, Lori said she'd very much like to do HR, and my blessing, she's welcome to do that. P and C, I put myself on as the chair, but if somebody else really wants that, I'm glad to let you do that, but I'm more than willing to do it as well, since I don't have to do budget committee this year.
He's looking at that side of the table.
Since Suzanne was so kind to do budget committee for me, I'm more than willing to step up and do P and C this year.
Jenny wants to do it. Jenny, yeah, Jenny.
I think she's saying she wants to do it.
Oh, I.
You know, if you leave the rule, if you leave the rule, we can volunteer you behind your back.
That's what I was going to say, I thought, you know, you didn't volunteer people when they were here.
That was a new rule, wasn't it, huh? New rules. Broken, sorry.
Let me think about it.
Okay, you can always let me know, we can make that change, nothing's set in stone.
Don't volunteer when you leave, so.
Yeah, okay.
On the ADA, I assume, Jenny, I really thought you were probably the most qualified if we had to have a meeting for the ADA.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, wonderful. On CIP, I believe both yourself and Hank Boyle expressed, no, Sue Tremblay and Hank Boyle both expressed interest in that, so you're happy to do CIP, right, Sue?
I love CIP.
Okay.
Why, I don't know.
Hank is willing to step into your shoes if you have to leave for any part of the year during that time.
Okay.
Plus, that'll certainly help you out for budget committee as well.
Yeah.
On that. The elementary planning, that was basically, people had volunteered, same thing for the co-curricular. GEA and GES, I kept myself and Philip on it because both of us had, each one of us had sat on one of the committees, I sat on the GEA, and Philip had sat in on the GES negotiations, so if there was any issues that came up, I thought it'd be best if we sat on it. I don't think there's any other members still present that sat on the negotiations on the board right now.
I was, yeah.
Oh, you were on GES, right?
I was on GES as well, yeah.
I did too, GES.
In my previous life, I was on negotiations several times.
That won't happen.
And I did this.
Sue, tell us how you feel about it.
Yeah, I mean, my concern was, most of the time we'd have to meet is if somebody had, if there was clarification, needed to be met on the contract.
Right.
So, I was looking for people that sat in on that. You have your legislative contact person, if anybody else wants to get the legislative updates on the weekly basis, let me know, I can get your name added to it. Philip, are you getting them right now?
Add mine to that.
Sure.
Thank you.
Okay, I thought so. Anybody else want to have their name, email added to it, if I can get that added, okay? Stacy does a good job of trying to summarize and sending it out to you as well every week on that. Area Committee, I don't think we're ever going to have to meet, but this clarification needed, we have that set up. SAU Executive Committee, that may change if, depending on who gets nominated to be the chair or vice chair or an officer's position on that, so that is up to being changed possibly. SAU Contract Committee, I think this is the committee that we had talked about setting up to meet and discuss about the insurance. So, it's myself, Philip, and I think Jeff Tate had volunteered a year ago for that.
Well, let's hold him to it.
Exactly.
It's not.
He's not, he will, he is going to be back for May though, he said, his job is going to come back in May. Technology, we're looking for a volunteer, as well as GTV, we need a volunteer, and Planning Board, we need a volunteer. With Hank Boyle being absent, the rule does allow us to automatically appoint him somewhere. Anybody want to make a suggestion?
I think Hank would be great planning board.
Hank, GTV. His wife's there anyway.
Planning Board, GTV, and Technology. I'm going to say Technology may not be Hank's forte.
Yeah, probably not. GTV for Hank.
Thank you. And, well, I'll ask, we will ask him about, Hank has, did Hank do GTV for us last year? I think he did.
No, Jeff Tate did.
Yeah, Tate.
Okay.
But he's not here either.
That's right.
Let's sign him up again.
Why don't we ask Hank to do Planning Board, and we'll ask Jeff if he'll do GTV?
Yeah.
Okay, we'll ask that and get that confirmed up for next time. Any other science questions or changes anybody wants to make, or can you please, they want it to be either on or off what they get put on?
And just to verify, barbecue's on the twenty, it's twenty-three June.
Twenty days graduation.
Which way's the wing? Twenty-three June, yeah.
June twenty-third, because the school did not come forward to change it on the eighteen
like they thought about doing, correct?
Correct.
Correct.
They talked with the teachers and everybody decided to stay at the twenty-third. There were too many plans that were already in the works, there were too many things already going forward, so.
Excellent, thank you. I'm not sure we support, we don't necessarily support it that, since we are really trying to promote academic rigor. Thank you. All righty, so that is done. Well, we're going to jump right to the discussion of Mountain View Field Trip to Ferry Beach, which was a little surprise that came up.
No, actually, this one's different than the next one.
Oh, I'm sorry.
You're talking about the next one.
I'm thinking, yes, I apologize, yes.
So, this is actually just, I'm looking for the board's thoughts. Traditionally, Mountain View has had the eighth-grade class trip that went to Washington, and then when the number started to dwindle from there, we added Ferry Beach to that, and then a bunch of day trip kind of things for kids who stayed back, or you could just stay at the building. With the numbers lowered even this year, that caused us not to do the trip at all, and the MVP picked up the trip to Washington over at Bro Vacation. One of the things that Jim and I have had a couple of conversations on is looking, kind of rethinking the, a trip, and looking at it perhaps seventh grade as a getting the three school districts together kind of a time where you're blending the three school districts and doing it more as team building. One of the things that other, that also prompted us was the fact that Sergeant Camp, which New Boston and Dunbar sent their sixth graders to, is closing. So, I did bring this up, I will tell you, that Dunbar, and I believe, will support something in seventh grade, New Boston would like to continue to do something in sixth grade, so I don't know where they would fall on this, but it was a conversation that Jim and I talked about, perhaps looking at a Ferry Beach trip for the entire seventh-grade class, and they would be able to do it relatively inexpensive, and what we thought about was just as scoping it out was perhaps half the school on Monday and Tuesday, Wednesday, the entire school would be there just for the day, the Monday, Tuesday group would go home Wednesday afternoon, the other group would stay Thursday and Friday, it would be broken up by team, so that you would be, what we thought about was, how do we, how do we integrate the three schools and doing it better? And so, Jim and I had a conversation, I said, well, before we go anywhere else with this, like planning or thinking about it or talking to parents, let's bring it to the board and see what the board's thoughts are on that.
I'm not sure.
Whether it's in, it's in main, yeah, it's a cell.
It's in Scarborough.
Oh, okay, I said Scarborough, okay.
It's on the other side of Jordan's Beach. All seventh graders for New Boston, Dunbar, and Gostown are at Mountain View, right?
Right.
Okay. So, forgive me, how are the three schools involved?
No, it's just, it's three districts, I'm sorry, just that the, in the beginning of seventh grade, Gostown kids have been there, Dunbar and New Boston, sorry, Dunbar and New Boston are joining them, so looking at the beginning of seventh grade as an opportunity for the three school district students, I guess, to.
Like during the summer or during school time, or?
We would be looking most likely October, November, and this, we really haven't explored it a whole lot because we were looking to see where the board fell on the, fell on the concept of it. Right now, before, they were doing the eighth-grade class trip during the school week, so it's about the same amount of time we would be losing, so that's not a change.
And what's going to be the educational value to this trip?
Well, Ferry Beach, I will tell you, the science curriculum is tied directly in with our seventh-grade science curriculum.
Why don't we, I guess my suggestion would be that we have a proposal. I mean, I for one, think it's an interesting idea, it sort of dovetails with some of the things that we've heard from Jim in the past, it, you know, the way it's cut up, sort of sounds like it makes sense, and sounds like we can get, take advantage of it at all his instructional time, and maybe just, if there, if there's nobody who's averse to it, let's get a proposal and get a little bit more flesh on the bones.
And that's really where I was at, was, you know, how's, how does the board feel about changing it from an eighth grade to a seventh grade with different kind of thought process, and before we went and asked parents if they were interested, you know, we didn't want to go through the whole.
Should we check with kids and parents to see what they prefer, because?
If they have an interest.
Yeah. Whether they want to continue with the eighth-grade trip, or?
Well, the, I mean, that's the other thing, is that, is that something that is likely to be something that kids will have the opportunity to do because MVP runs it? Or will they, if there is something else that goes, I would sort of like to know the answer to that question.
Yeah. It would depend on whether MVP wanted to continue to do it every year for eighth graders to go to Washington, I think. Do you know how many kids are going this year?
Forty-five.
Is, do you know if that's up, down, or about the same?
Well, it's down.
That's down.
That sounds like it's down, yeah.
We would have had a second bus, except we were short by fifteen children, we needed to fill the second bus.
Okay.
That's such an awesome trip, though, I think if.
Yeah, no, I agree.
If any kids can go, I think we deserve to promote them to go.
Yeah.
It's an awesome trip.
No, no, I mean, I don't think there's any question that there'd be support for it.
Yeah.
Well, the proposal, out of state field trip quest, this, this, the question came This, this, the question came up with, are we fingerprinting and doing background checks on the chaperones that are going out with the students on these trips? My assumption was that any volunteer that was gonna have one-on-one time with the students without having a teacher or administrator present at the same time was being fingerprinted and having a background check done. Evidently, I thought that was our pro, our practice. Evidently, we may not have been doing that all the time. And this kind of came up during this one. There's a trip for Boston in which they're gonna be breaking into groups, I believe, of what, four students per adult?
Correct.
And some of these adults are volunteers, and they'll be alone with these four students. And the question is, is are we requiring them to be, have a background check done? I, my, my understanding was, I was under the assumption that we did it if they had one-on-one time. If they were coming into the classroom just to do reading time, you know, and there was a teacher present or an administrator present, we weren't necessarily doing background checks for that. But once they had one-on-one time with the child unsupervised, they were having background checks.
It's, okay, so is, is one-on-four different from one-on-one?
Well, what I'm saying, what I'm saying, I should take that back.
Well, no, no, and I.
When the student, when there was one adult with the children where they weren't being supervised by an existing administrator or a teacher. I thought they had background checks done.
It wasn't a challenge, it was a clarification, just to make sure I understood what you're gonna.
Yeah, I misused it.
And if I can frame it a, a bit, we had, we got a request from Mountain View Middle School for two seventh grade teams to go to Boston, and because now they all have to go, if they're outstate, bring them before the board. So, I got the request. I prompted with a couple of questions, because I had questions about the trip, and I prompted the question of, have all the chaperones been fingerprinted? Because it's a huge number of chaperones, they're looking at about fifty chaperones. And so, I got a, a nice call from one of the teachers saying, "What do you mean?" And so, that prompted me to ask all the principals to say, "Well, who do we fingerprint?" Our policy, so I'm actually, would like H R to look at the policy because it is not clear.
We actually did look at that, I think, last year, and we do have, we did change, we tweaked it about how we have the ability to fingerprint volunteers as the board sees fit.
I'm looking for.
That's, that's crazy.
The board or the, or the administration.
Our policy on volunteers, which is I J O C, is silent to the fingerprinting. It doesn't say anything about being fingerprinted. It just has, talks about volunteers, what is a volunteer, what they should do. Then, policy G B C D, which is on background investigation and criminal records checks, on the bottom states volunteers, it says, designated volunteers are subject to a background investigation, criminal records check, and the provision of this policy. Designated volunteers, which is in quotes, are defined and so designated pursuant to policy I J O C. So, I J O C doesn't define what a designated volunteer is, which is the person who needs to be fingerprinted. So, I polled a bunch of people and said, "What is your interpretation of this policy?" Everybody who I spoke to said clearly that it was their understanding that anybody who was left alone with a child without supervision by a teacher or a faculty member needed to be fingerprinted. So, any chaperones who would be going on a trip and taking a group of kids off needed to be fingerprinted. So, I, I guess I'm looking for the board for some clarification on the intent of who needed to be fingerprinted, as well as approval for the trip, kind of go hand in hand, so.
I missed the trip.
The trip is, uh, no, I missed, I believe it's April twentieth.
You don't have, you don't have terminal time to background check.
April twentieth, I did talk with them and told them that they should plan on figuring this out. They have been in contact with Carol. It will, we'll work through it if that's the board's intent, is to get those people fingerprinted.
It doesn't come back that quick.
No, but they have to sign, when they, when they sign, the fingerprints actually usually take two to three months. We don't actually get them back, but they sign a form that says if they've, if they, if they're not admitting to something, it's perjury. So, it is interesting.
But that's not why, but that's not why we're fingerprinting them.
We're fingerprinting, making sure we're not.
Yeah, we're printing where they're not. But clearly, that, I mean, that's how the practice has been, because we don't get finger, I mean, we hire our teachers, and we get fingerprinted, and we get the responses.
I have, I have one other question.
We need, we need to take a thirty-second break. We're running over the hour and a half, new tape has to be put into the thing, so thirty-second break.
Okay, everyone get up and run around.
Chinese fagro?
Chinese fagro. Change our spots if they notice.
Can I get what the, the policy is again, that we need to?
It's I J O C, and, and M C has one, too.
Is it this? Yeah. All right, we're all set.
G B C D.
Hang on a sec.
How much does fingerprinting, um, criminal check?
For a volunteer, it's twenty-five dollars.
And who would be liable to pay that?
The volunteers pay it out. And that's been our practice.
So, we're asking the vol, asking the volunteer, tell them they need to be fingerprinted, do they get paid twenty-five dollars to be a volunteer?
Twenty-five bucks?
Correct.
You're never gonna get a volunteer again.
And that's, and that's something that the board will need to think about, whether in the future you wanna budget a line item to pay for volunteers to be fingerprinted.
Are these, are these volunteers typically parents, though, right?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
I mean, I, I mean, we're not getting volunteers off the street to take kids on a field trip. I mean, we're their parents.
But, I mean, I, I think there's, there's a potential liability exposure there, and Ray was just mentioning that we probably need to check, there may be a clause in our liability policy for the district that we provide them possibly, that they are required.
I think, I think that some way we have to override that cost for people, because it's, I mean, most people nowadays, in order to go on a school trip, are taking a day off from work anyway, and then we're asking them to pay twenty-five dollars for a criminal check.
And most of the time, they're paying their way, too, to go on this field trip.
Exactly. So, I, you know, I think if we ever want chaperones to go on these trips, we have to make some accommodations for the lifestyle, I think.
That's twelve hundred bucks for a field trip.
Yes.
One-to-four, that's, that's kind of a, is that the usual number of chaperones?
The ratio?
No, it's, it's because, well, they're, because they're going, the, the trip is basically this, the students, it's on budgeting, planning, historic sites. So, each four, all, every four students gets together, creates their own itinerary, and they do their own field trip. So, there's four students and an adult that go in Boston.
I have to tell you, I've gone on it. It is the coolest trip. It really is, because the kids have to figure out how much money they're gonna spend. They have to figure out what they wanna do. They have to figure out their timing as to get to their events, and how will they get there? Will they walk? Will they take a cab, or will that, you know, fit into their expenses? So, they have to figure out, like, maps, and time to get to places, and budget, and if they wanna do these three things, how can we make all that happen, time, budget, money, whatever? So, it really is a cool trip for kids to, to figure all of these different aspects of going to Boston, you know? Nobody does that for them. They figure out how they're gonna get, how they're gonna pay, and what they wanna do.
So, I think there's probably two things on the table. One is the approval of the trip. The other is the question of chaperones, and do we require them to be fingerprinted for this trip? I, I will tell you, when I got data from all the principals, nobody is fingerprinting chaperones at this point.
Yeah, but I, I hate to say it, if the issue's now on the table.
Absolutely. Well, this is why, the teacher asked me why I was picking on them, and I said, "I'm not." It's just that this has to go to the board, so I'm asking the question.
I think before we can approve the trip, we need to verify our policy. I mean, we could probably make a motion pending what we find out, but I think the step has to be finding out what our policy, the true wording of our policy, and our policy as a school board, but also insurance policy. And then, go from there, because, I mean, if, I basically, I mean, be the devil's advocate, I guess, we're not even devil's advocate, the bad man on the table, whatever you wanna call this. If the policy says we need to fingerprint them, this trip isn't happening. You're talking two weeks out, and it takes three months to get fingerprints back.
Right, but I, I will tell you, the, the practice is, we don't, I mean, we don't wait till the fingerprints come back. We can't, we hire teachers every day, and that's the direction from the police department, who we, who does the fingerprints for us. That's, we don't, we hire a teacher two weeks before a school starts. We don't get those back until after.
October.
Yeah.
I got a problem with that whole thing, but that's. I mean, what, I mean, you fingerprint someone to find out if they got a record, and they gotta sign something saying, "I don't have a record," and if I do, oops.
No, if it's, if it has, if it's not our practice, I really don't think that we can penalize this trip if it hasn't been our practice.
I mean, it has not been our practice.
Well, but we can, because it's now an issue that's been brought to our attention. I hate to say it, but we can. We have to do what's right, and if the issue is now in front of us, we have to follow what we've said.
Obligating.
We're obligated to do that now. I hate to say it, but we are.
Our policy.
But your policy doesn't say.
The policy, if that's the issue, the policy is ambiguous, because it doesn't, it doesn't define, and I didn't write the policy.
Doesn't that come from the School Board Association, our policy?
Was last visited.
I think the new one did, but I don't think what it referenced to has come up, and that's where the.
Well, then they screwed up. I mean. Right. Anything that is typically in quotes is a defined term, and you should be able to locate it someplace else, if not in that, in that provision, in the provision in which it's referred to. But in the absence of that, we have an ambiguous policy.
We do.
Okay, so, if, if we are following policy, we really don't, at this juncture, I don't believe that we have anything to follow. But, but Phil's point is not misplaced regardless of what the policy says, because the only thing that we can then rely on is what our past practice has been. My child is one of the students who went on that trip. I happen to know the parent she was going with. I guess it didn't even dawn on me, and therefore, I didn't ask the question. In light of the fact that it's now been asked, it strikes me as fairly silly that I didn't. But, but at least for all the right reasons. I guess, I guess the way, one way to put the genie back in the proverbial bottle is to give all parents notice of who the chaperone is, who's in the group, and have them sign off that they've consented to that.
Along with their consent form?
Right. And, and that will give us the opportunity to revisit this issue and make some decisions.
Well, you have H R revisit, obviously, needs to correct, review and correct the policy, so arrange appropriately.
Determine.
That sounds like a good solution, though, I mean.
To have them put something on there about who the parent is that will be chaperoning in.
I guess I'd say that's okay, provided it meets terms with our insurance.
Can you check that?
You don't have a copy with you, Ray?
I was gonna say, I thought he had it memorized. Didn't you just go back in your database and head and say, "Okay, let me check paragraph six, page two."
I apologize.
An opportunity.
He handed me this before the meeting, yeah.
Would you want that, that statement to indicate that, that chaperone has not been, had a background check done? Or just the chaperone's name?
I don't, I don't.
Don't see anything indicating like that.
I think, 'cause, 'cause I, I'd be willing to bet that.
All of them, none of them.
All, all four of those kids are in a group where they know the other three kids, and everybody knows each other, so. So, I just, I think that the most important thing is to notify the parents of, of the students in the group as to who the chaperone is, and get, and get acknowledgement that they understand that that is the case.
Is that a, a motion to approve the trip under those?
Yep.
Okay.
I would make that motion.
On second.
All right, restate it, Phil.
Sue. Excuse me.
This is for Deborah's benefit.
No, Sue clearly understood what I said, so I'm gonna let her, so, no. The motion is to approve the trip with notice to the parents of each group as to the identity of the chaperone in the group, and we would like the form back from them, executed, signed by them.
With their consent, yes.
With their consent.
Sort of in second.
And we add, pending that our insurance carrier doesn't have.
Yeah.
No problem.
The Suzanne addendum.
To the extent, just, just for me, if there are definitions that an endorsement relies on, can you let me know what those are? I mean, you, you can scan it and send it to me. That'd be great.
It's already seconded?
All of you want an update on the language, we can put a broadcast.
Yeah, just put a brief breakfast survey's updated on that, so if there's anybody has a major concern when they get the update.
Philip.
Any other questions, all in favor of the motion? That's unanimous again. Thank you. Payda Park, you have an update from the high school.
Yes, short term, in the near term, yeah.
Thank you.
We're gonna have to do the meeting all over again.
Payda Park, I spoke with.
Deb, I hope you get really good. Take a watch and single back and start from scratch.
Um, Payda Park, I, I spoke with Frank. We had a meeting with the administration of the high school. We are looking to charge students, we determine a hundred dollars as an adequate fee.
Per year.
Um, per year, no matter when they get the sticker, it's per year. We pented hot about parading it if they get it in October, and we said, "It's just a hundred dollars for the sticker." That will, this year, they gave out two-hundred-and-ninety-two stickers, which would help support that position that we cut out of the budget, which was the purpose of that. At some point, I think we'd like to explore fines as well for parking on campus without that, but we'll stick with. So, I just wanted to let the board know that, that, that we will be going out at, they will be putting the word out that it will be a hundred dollars for a parking sticker for next year.
It's a lot of money.
We pulled students in. They're willing to pay it.
Yeah. They got this one, come Suzanne.
If it's gonna cost me a hundred dollars for a sticker, but there aren't gonna be any fines if I don't get a sticker and I bring my car to school anyway, why am I gonna pay a hundred dollars for the sticker?
'Cause we're us, if they park on campus without a sticker, then they have to, they can get towed.
Well, will they get towed?
Yeah, we have to.
It has happened before.
Okay.
Actually, we, this year, since we've had that position, Zach Fowler's position, we have been able to stay on top of it much more, and so, we have towed cars. We have given warnings. I think this, the dollar amount is needed to be able to offset the cost of that position. It is something that we have looked at, that Frank would like to explore is fines for kids who do car on campus and who have multiple offenders, and it certainly serves us better than towing their car.
Well, I don't know. Towing is a pretty.
It is a pretty significant event.
It's expensive. I understand the, I understand the thought of trying to have one cost, but there are students who get their license in the middle of the year. Was there any consideration doing a full year and then a second half of the year price? Because, I mean, for the student who doesn't get their license until December, and then gets a car and it's a parking.
Chance that they don't get parked, they'll already be sold out to spot.
Yeah, I was gonna, well, I was gonna say, they, they pretty much sell out.
But, but, but the chance that there is a spot open, and wants to get it, now pays a hundred dollars for a half a year's, and just.
Only seniors can park there, so.
We did talk about it, and our, our feeling was, for the most part, parking stickers sell out.
And they're over sixteen.
Yeah, but I can get money, so.
I mean, I don't know, if you've ever been here, they wait in line to get stickers, so.
They're sold out before the first day of school.
Frank wasn't concerned that we would be having kids in June, you know, looking for stickers.
So, there's, there's usually no availability beyond that initial run.
Usually, one becomes available during the year because a student has parking buildings taken away for certain reasons, poor academics or other reasons. And then, somebody on the waiting list gets to have the opportunity to buy a parking sticker.
Okay.
At full price?
That's what they're saying, yeah. There's a decision of full price.
I'm kinda tacking on to that, and then also something for Ms. McInnes, but, actually, juniors have been able to get parking spots, and they actually overbook, so like, kinda like a flight, like a airplane, but they, they overbook the parking lots. So, it's not just the number of parking spots, but they overbook them, kinda compensating for people not coming in.
We used to, actually, people, kids used to get an assigned numbered parking spot, and then there were issues with kids parking in other spots, or kids who didn't show up, then that spot went empty. So, this year, they decided to just go with a first come, first served.
Free for all.
'Cause I think we only have two-hundred-and-seventy, some are parking spots available for the kids.
We can assign the votes, they're all numbered.
Yeah.
Well, some of them are for staff. I think about two-hundred-and-seventy or change are available for students this year.
'Cause the staff get an assigned.
'Cause the staff get the fine, yeah. So, that was just an F Y I. The board had directed us to come up with a.
Thank you. We have the school board orientation refresher workshop. You guys got a handout? Should've had it right in front of you. It's on May twelfth. You guys wanna go? Just get hold of Denise, and she'll get you signed up and get you registered. Academy for Science and Design request, oh, for additional tuition payment, denied. That was easy, next.
Absolutely, it was easy. Uh, this was a, this was a request from the Academy for Science and Design, which is a chartered public school, it's a charter school. We actually, uh, we have two high school students who attend the charter school. One is actually a New Boston student, so I will re-bringing this requesting to Boston as well. They currently receive adequacy funds at five thousand dollars per student. Their operational costs are eighty-five hundred dollars per student, and they're respectfully requesting that you consider sending to the academy some part of the difference of the thirty-five hundred dollars. So, I'm only bringing you forward, 'cause I don't have the ability to make that decision, but it certainly isn't something that I would recommend to the board.
Well, just, just, just to make sure that I understand, 'cause I, I lost most of the green matter earlier. green matter earlier in our evening, um, the, they are receiving five thousand dollars for the support of a Goffstown student.
Correct.
Who is not taking any classes at G H S and the five thousand dollars that normally would've come to Goffstown is now going elsewhere.
Correct.
Good luck. I would, I would make.
A little bit of a floor, uh, no, we'll, we'll see if any motion is made. If there's no motion made, the decision is made, that we can't do anything.
Oh, okay.
Is this a request that the student will not be able to attend anymore if?
No, no, it's a charter school, so, yeah, it's just, they're looking, as most charter schools are, they struggle with financials, they don't get, they get a limited amount, they get what is that, the adequacy dollars that would normally come to Goffstown, and so they're saying their cost to educate a child is eighty-five hundred dollars, they're asking if Goffstown would be willing to chip in some more money to educate a Goffstown student.
Do I have any motions on the floor?
What brings this charge?
This is in Merrimack.
That's what I thought, okay.
I believe I have to ask twice, correct?
Three times, three times.
Do I have any motions on the floor? Third, final time, any motions on the floor? Answers no. Thank you. Uh, Goffstown School District, elected official benefit, open benefit time, um, you can purchase at your cost any of the health and dental, uh, benefits available. I, open enrollment is May or June?
May.
May. So if anybody's interested, I bought in on the dental last year, took full advantage of it.
Dental's fairly expensive.
Maxed it out at the end of June. That's some major dental work coming.
Yep, if you are interested, just contact Carol in our office and she can get you costs.
I'm just gonna say, policy J Q, I believe that was removed, cause it was not supposed to be on there.
It actually hasn't gone to H R yet, so.
On that, uh, and before we go into the teacher representative of the school board, cause I know it's gonna be a little bit of a talk, I have a couple other ones, uh, Dave French sent me a letter yesterday, it says, uh, dear Keith, the Parks and Recreation Commission has begun work on a Parks and Recreation Department master plan. We are organizing a steering committee which we hope will help in the formation of a public forum. We are looking for input from your organization as we proceed in this venture. If your organization wishes to participate, please contact Dave French, blah, blah, blah. Anybody interested in serving? No, I, I'm gonna look for a volunteer, cause I don't know if Hank would be willing to serve on that committee. Anybody on the board interested in serving on that?
My husband's on the board already, so.
Yeah, he's on the commission already, yes.
Or he may be.
And you're not looking to spend any more time with your husband?
Um. I would talk to, but I just thought it was a conflict of interest, you see?
Anybody interested, I mean, I could certainly try to, to make it, um, we have to respond by May tenth, so, you know, having a couple people absent, I'll, I'll see if Jeff or Hank, you know, I'll ask them if they're interested. If not, I can try to make it, but I don't think I'd make all their meetings, but.
This is with Parks and Rec?
Parks and Rec, yes.
Jeff actually might because he works Parks and Rec's rap place on the budget committee, so he may be interested, may have some interest. I will volunteer.
Yeah, I'll ask, um, Jeff, Taylor, Hank, if they're interested.
I will mod, if someone could, my turn.
Uh, do you want to do a quick update on the principal search committee from Maple Ave has narrowed it down to four final, four semifinalists and they're gonna do sec.
Parks, right.
Three, sorry, three, correct, we were real close to having four. Uh, round to three, we're gonna be doing another set of interviews on Thursday evening this week, so it is proceeding on the expected time schedule. So hopefully for the April twentieth one, there, hopefully Stacy will have a chance to look at the recommended person or persons from the committee and come to us with a recommendation. And now we're gonna go right to teachers representative on school board. I will say, I tried calling a couple of the school boards, like Len and Derry, and there was one up north that had a teacher's rep, um, didn't get a tremendous amount of feedback from them. Um, what I, what feedback I did get was they felt that it certainly helped open up communication with the teacher, cause you basically were now pretty much guaranteeing that a teacher was gonna be showing up at your school board meetings. They suffered from the same problem that we have a tendency to suffer from until recently, that not too many teachers would attend school board meetings. Currently we have one that has been regularly attending, we thank her for that. But they didn't, they didn't really share much negativity about it or anything, they said it certainly opened up communication with them, and I know Stacy did a little bit of research as well. You guys got handed it, um, two meetings ago, I believe. On that, um, I did ask some of the teachers, as I came into contact with them over the last couple of weeks, um, teachers expressed that they thought they, they would be interested, that they would have candidates that would be interested in serving, yet, uh, their big concern was they thought it was a big difference between the high school and the elementary and that there might be two of them, one from the elementary and one from the high school, was the input I got back from them.
I was actually gonna say, Sam, I almost think we may need.
One from the middle school.
Three. One from the middle school, no, I don't think one from every school, but I think one from the three different levels of schools that we have because there is a difference in the schools, I mean, there's a transition from the elementary to the middle school and there's a transition from middle school to the high school because there are different types of schools.
My thought was, if we did have multiple ones, they didn't have to attend every single meeting.
No.
They could do a rotation or say, okay, in this meeting, looking at the agenda, this one's gonna have some important things from middle school, I need to be there for this one or.
Yeah, I, we're talking representatives, I think we should open the floor, I would.
These are non-voting, these have to be a non-voting position, then they already said they can't create a voting position.
I would be open to having, I guess, three representatives, three teacher representatives, one from the high school, one from the elementary schools, and one from the middle schools. Open it up, see what we get from volunteers.
Well, the other thing is, do we wanna have a volunteer or have each, like, two, the elementary schools, the middle school and the high school elect someone? Let them choose who the representative's gonna be.
It would, I mean, they would be, I guess it would be, um.
Elect like the student rep is, you know, they, they, they vote and they make the decision on who they wanna have come forth.
I hope, yeah, I think what you should do is have, put it out to the teachers. I think, um, anyone's interested, they should put their name in the hat for the nomination and, um, just as they do for the, um, student one, the, they should vote on who they would like to represent them, because you're having one teacher that's going to come here that's gonna speak for the group, pretty much, I think that's the, the way to do it.
Personally, I don't think you're gonna have a problem, I don't think you're gonna have a long line of people voting.
I don't think so.
Hey, you might get surprised.
It would be nice.
My only reason why I say vote is this way, you know, you can say, listen, you guys had an opportunity to choose who you wanted to be your representative, if they say, well, we don't agree with that representative, it's like, oh, I'm sorry, you know? She's here, he or she is here for the whole year and you, you guys get to choose someone different next year, if you like.
Nominated from the schools, I agree with that.
Yeah.
Yeah, let them nominate who they want to send as their representative.
Right.
Yeah.
I think, which is, you're saying, I think we're all saying the same thing, but I think we have to get a consensus on the board whether or not we want that to happen.
Right, we have to make a motion to have it accepted and then have our policy changed, have a policy drawn up for that.
I would make a motion that we open the tables up to having teacher representatives on our board, one from each level of schools that we have.
One from elementary, one from middle school, one from high school.
To be nominated by, to be nominated by the, those schools.
Nominated or elected from the schools.
Yeah, representative of their choosing.
Their choice, however it gets done.
And, you know, I, I would open it up too in that if, if somebody wanted to come from each school and be at every meeting.
Oh, they're always welcome too.
I think that.
Yeah, but they're open.
That's an open invitation anyway.
Well, yeah, but to be able to speak of a, you know, yeah. Um, I would hate to say to somebody who came from, you know, another school, um, no, you couldn't come to represent your school, I, I think that would be wrong. If, if they're comfortable with somebody from each section, you know, I think that you could go with it, but I think if, if people clearly wanna represent their school, then I think they should go with that.
Okay.
Second.
I think Laurie already seconded, she had done it already. Obviously, what we'd have to do is, we'd have, this would have to be effective for beginning of the next school year, this would allow H R to develop the policy, come to the board for approval and everything, and allow the schools to determine how they're gonna have someone come to us.
Can I, may I make a suggestion?
Sure.
That, um, I think, I.
Smoke is coming out.
Here's some brain matter.
Yeah, give him some more.
I could need some nap.
Well, I do. Conceptually, I like the idea, um, because I think that that's a voice, um, that has value at this table, um, more frequently rather than less frequently. Instead of simply appearing on, on issue basis, appearing on a regular basis adds some value.
It's a good place for job sharing, too.
Do we have, if, if there's general agreement that that is the case, that fundamentally there's, there's value to having that, providing that opportunity and inviting that level of participation, um, have we done an adequate job of forming exactly what that's gonna look like? Because we, in some cases, as likely as not, um, the representative from any given level may or may not be, may not be a member of the community, but is a member of the educational community.
Yeah, and I don't think they need to be a member of Goffstown.
No, I'm not, I'm not saying they do, but I'm, I'm sort of thinking, I'm thinking about sort of the, the tentacles of this, um, they would not be here as a voting member. Is, is that correct?
I risk it is not allowed to create a voting member.
Okay.
So these, these people would not be, cannot stay for non-public or anything else.
Okay.
And I think, I think all those things we can outline in the policy, I mean, I can certainly work with Laurie on all of those pieces, she also wanna think about, how long is the term for, is it one year, how, when, when does it go from March to March, does it was Denver to July?
Thank you, cause, cause you're doing exactly what I wanted, what I was coming to, which is, is, is the policy something that should occur before the decision? So that we know, so really we know what we're voting on.
Well, maybe it's at least giving us direction that that's where we wanna go.
To create a policy, part of the motion is to create the policy for this, to put it into motion.
Okay, can we do that?
No.
Who made the motion?
Phil made the motion, Phil would have to amend.
Did you amend your motion?
Well, first of all, you have to withdraw your second first, to be Robert's rules.
Well, yeah, but let's find out if he's even willing to.
Yeah.
Okay. Are you willing to amend your motion to have a policy created for our approval to do that? Are you willing to do that? Okay, all right, Laurie, will you second that?
Yes.
Okay, now we can vote on that motion. All in favor? One, two, one, two, three, Anthony Anas, thank you.
Maybe start counting first.
Yeah, so maybe we could have.
It's gonna earn us key, come on.
And then have it available for, um, for, uh, by June, so.
Thank you, Laurie.
I wanted to show that he knows how to count.